Good evening. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, Commissioner's staff and public are attending remotely via Zoom by phone. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak. So the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. Due to COVID-19 requirements, the public is allowed to participate by Zoom or submit comments by email prior to the meeting. Those comments are included in the record of the meeting. Public also has an opportunity to provide brief comments in the lobby of the Municipal Office Building. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll to begin the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Roll call, Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McCarronan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Alvey.
Here. Our invocation is being given by our own Commissioner Harold Johnson of Faith Deliverance Church of God in Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Tonight we greet you and we invoke your presence and your wisdom and your direction. By your Spirit, Lord, help us to hear your voice and to know your directives. I pray for our mayor and for each member of this commission that we govern this county and this city in a way that benefits every one dot county regardless of our backgrounds. And I pray that God you would bless us with all of your graces. That all that we do before your glory, I pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of the Republic One nation under God liberty
liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the clerk, are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
Mayor Alvey, there was. The blue sheet was issued for tonight's session to consider a resolution amending the scheduled meeting times for the neighborhood and community development and the economic development and finance standing committees. That was the only changes to tonight's agendas, Mayor.
Thank you. So again, two parts to our meeting, planning and zoning comes up first. I'd ask the clerk to read the statement required by state law governing the planning and zoning portion of our meeting, followed by the items on the planning and zoning consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We would like to welcome all present to this meeting of the Unified Government Commission. Members of the commission are Mayor David Alvey, Commissioner Melissa Bynum at Large District One, Commissioner Tom Burrows at Large District Two, Commissioner Gail Townsend, District One, Commissioner Brian McCarronan, District Two, Commissioner Christian Ramirez, District Three, Commissioner Harold Johnson Jr., District Four, Commissioner Mike Kane, District Five, Commissioner Angela Markley, District Six, Commissioner Jim Walters, District Seven, and Commissioner Jane Philbrook, District Eight. As each petition is called this evening, all persons for or against will be given the opportunity to express their views. If this is the first time that a particular petition has been before this commission, the commission has three options. Option one, it can approve the recommendation of the planning commission with six votes. Option two, it can override the planning commission's recommendation, but it would take eight votes to override. Option three, it can return the matter to the planning commission for further consideration together with a statement specifying the reasons for the referral back to the planning commission. The consent agenda is the first part of the planning and zoning agenda. Items on the consent agenda have received a unanimous vote of recommendation by the planning commission. Unless there is a request to set aside an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the public, Unified Government Commission, or staff, then the planning commission's recommendation on all of these items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Unified Government Commission at one time. I will read the list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the mayor will ask if there are any requests to set aside items from the consent agenda. This is your time to raise your hand and request that an item be set aside if you do not agree with the planning commission's recommendation. If you contacted UG Clerk's office, that item will be set aside by the UG clerk on your behalf. If an item is set aside, the matter will be discussed and voted upon separately. All items not set aside will be approved with the planning commission's recommendation. We appreciate the attendance of those here this evening, and we recognize the importance of each petition. We would remind you that there are a number of items on the agenda. We would appreciate your efforts to make your remarks as concise as possible. We ask that anyone who is joining us by Zoom or by phone to mute your phone when not speaking to avoid background noise, so you will not disturb the meeting. Once the petitioners make their presentation, anyone for or against will be allowed the maximum three minutes to state your views. This is your time to raise your hand. When your name is called, please state your name and city for the record. The mayor and commission are required to disclose contacts with proponents or opponents on any item on the planning and zoning agenda. I will ask if any member of the commission wished to disclose any contact with proponents or opponents of any item on the agenda.
I am seeing none.
Okay, seeing none. Mayor, I will now read the agenda. The items on the consent agenda. Planning and zoning consent agenda, change of zone applications. Item one, COZ 2021-009 Larry J. Easton, change of zone from R1 Single Family District to AG Agricultural District for horses, cattle, and hay production at 2948 South 65th Street, recommended for approval. Item two, COZ 2021-013 Andrew C. Miller with Real Estate Group. Change of zone from M1 Light Industrial Industrial Park to MP2 Plan General Industrial District for storage in conjunction with existing twin traffic, a traffic marketing and striping company at 626 North 47th Street, recommended for approval. Item three, COZ 2021-017 William England. Change of zone from R1B Single Family District to CPO Plan Non-Retail Business District for office space at 2332 South 14th Street, recommended for approval. Item four, COZ 2021-031 James Veens with Integrity Diversified Holdings LLC. Change of zone from R1B Single Family District to R2B Two-Family District to reestablish a duplex which was converted into a single-family home at 218 North 12th Street, recommended for approval. B, special use permit applications. Item one, SP 2021-027 7521 Nebraska Avenue LLC. Special use permit for continuation of auto sales detailing and light repair at 7521 Nebraska Avenue, expired 11/29/2020, recommended for denial. Item two, SP 2021-047 Albert H. Walker, special use permit for horses on residential property at 3703, 3707, 3633 Bell Crossing, and 3701, 3702, and 3706 North 37th Street, and 3655 Sorter Drive, recommended for denial. Item three, SP 2021-067 Weston Sparks with Ride Forever Skate Park. Special use permit to operate a skate park skate school at 230 South 65th Street, recommended for approval for two years. Item four, SP 2021-068 Jill Schultz with K9 Club. Special use permit for a dog daycare at 20, at 221 South 22nd Street, recommended for approval for 10 years. Master Plan Amendments. Item one, NPL 2021-012 William England. Master Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential to Neighborhood Commercial at 2332 South 14th Street, recommended for approval. Item two, NPL 2021-010 Andrew C. Miller with Summit Real Estate Group. Master Plan Amendment from Mixed Use to Industrial at 626 North 47th Street, recommended for approval. Plan Review Applications. Item one, PR 2021-024 Annalee Palanco with Church Millegro de Vida. Preliminary and Final Plan Review for a church at 1217 Marion Lane, recommended for approval. Miscellaneous ordinances. One, an ordinance approving the Armadillo Area Master Plan, recommended for approval. Two, an ordinance resoning property at 4600 Parkview Avenue, 4551 Sloan Avenue, 3334 North 44th Terrace, 3319 North 44th Terrace, and 4249 Sorter Drive from AG Agricultural, R1B Single Family Districts to AG Agricultural District, recommended for approval. Three, an ordinance rezoning property at 8741 Parallel Parkway from R1 Single Family District to CPO Plan Non-R retail Business District, recommended for approval. Four, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for auto storage and auto maintenance at 1032 South 25th Street, recommended for approval. Five, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a drinking establishment with live entertainment at 508 Kansas Avenue, recommended for approval. Six, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit to keep eight mature ducks at 1921 Nebraska Avenue, recommended for approval. That represents all of the items on tonight's consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission, the county administrator, or public wish to set aside any item on the planning and zoning consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the planning and zoning consent agenda will be voted on by one vote to follow the recommendation of the planning commission.
This is Commissioner Philbrook. I would like to pull aside SP 2021-027, item one on special use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Hand.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. A point of clarification, I believe the city clerk read an ordinance to approve the master plan, but we had pulled that already out into the non-consent agenda, so that ordinance, if we need to, I'd like to pull now. But we did plan to set that aside and have it on our non-consent agenda as well.
I'm sorry, so what I are
miscellaneous E1, the city clerk read out an ordinance approving the Armadillo Area Master Plan, that should be pulled on the non-consent agenda, please.
Okay, so we pull that?
I'm looking, I thought that was already pulled, Gunner, and I believe the ordinance is what I read on the miscellaneous ordinance, not the miscellaneous. Let me take a look. I thought it'd already been moved to non-consent.
Yeah, I think it's just shown up in two places, Mr. Deckler. But we will take action on the ordinance as of after our presentation later this evening.
Hmm.
So to be clear, if we pull this from E1, we will have to discuss it at that point, but we're going to be discussing it anyway in the non-consent agenda, correct?
At least so. I think it was a typo.
Aaron Dougbock, I think it's just, it is just a repeat on here. I don't think it just really needs to be removed from the consent agenda, and that way when you take action, action under miscellaneous A1 non-consent.
But if we, if we keep, but if we keep in the consent agenda, it'll be approved before we hear the presentation.
That's correct. That's why we need to remove.
Oh, what we would do then is just do the presentation. We'll pull that from the consent agenda and then do the presentation and then vote on it, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Misty, are we doing this legally?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have item 2021-027 pulled. Is there anyone from the public who wish to pull an item? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Apologize, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, I, I, we spoke to our applicant, Mr. Albert Walker regarding special use permit.
2021-047.
047. I see him on the call. I, I do know he wants to pull that from the consent agenda, so I'll do that for him right now.
Thank you.
There he is. I think he just learned how to raise his hand.
Yes. Mr. Walker, go ahead and unmute.
On, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh. I took some more pictures down there to Mr. Mike Farland, and I took a D down there to him.
So, Mr. Walker, we just need to know, do you want to pull this from the consent agenda for us to discuss it separately?
Well, the container, they said they haven't even
Yes, sir. No, I understand. We're gonna, we're gonna pull this from the consent agenda and have an opportunity to provide your, your remarks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, right now, just talking about the whole
We'll come back to you. Okay. So we have 2021-027 and 2021-047. All right. Any other requests? Now, I entertain a motion for approval of the planning and zoning consent agenda excluding the set asides.
McCarronan moved to approve all items as submitted.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Getting ready. Here we go. Roll call, Johnson.
Hi.
Kane.
Hi.
Markley.
Hi.
Walters.
Hi.
Philbrook.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Burrows.
Hi.
Townsend.
Hi.
McCarronan.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
Vote is 10 to 0. That motion carries.
All right, that takes us to the first set aside. SP 2021-027 7521 Nebraska Avenue LLC. Special use permit for continuation of auto sales detailing and light repair at 7521 Nebraska Avenue. I'd ask for some remarks from Mr. Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Again, my name is Gunnar Hand. I'm Director of Planning and Urban Design. This case is a special use permit for a light auto repair shop. It's located in the Mid-Tenn area, just north of State Avenue. You can see it here on North 75th and Nebraska Avenue. It was a former car wash, I believe, that got converted into a light auto repair shop. There was quite a bit of history on this case. It had a previous SUP approval, but the building never received a certificate of occupancy. We did work with the applicant to check off that list. Originally, the applicant was not, was the renter, was not the owner, and therefore the SUP and did not submit the original SUP. He then took ownership of the LLP that had submitted the original SUP and which, at which point he was able to seek a continue, excuse me, a renewal. The SUP renewal carried additional conditions of approval based on what we had seen at the site, which were admittedly different than the CO requirements to get past the original birth building permit. So essentially, the work to get the project up and running happened in the two years amount of time that, that the SUP had expired. So there was a bit of an overlap there, and I think that caused a little bit of confusion. Regardless, we continued, we continued with the renewal of the SUP. The applicant did not agree that the requirements that we were asking for as it relates to the ordinance for special use permits was applicable to him. He, at that point, refused to respond to staff requests for additional information, questions, as well as revised site plans. He had sent communication, which we included in the staff report, that he was not going to participate moving forward. We reached, we sought to, the meeting was continued from the planning commission for 30 days to try to work through this. After multiple times of trying to reach the applicant, phone, email, we even sent him an invite to show up at a meeting a couple of times. He did not show up, and we were unable to complete our review of the project due to insufficient information. So we had to move forward with the recommendation of denial to the planning commission. They agreed unanimously, and here we are. The only update I really have on the project is the last time we drove by, which was admittedly about two or three weeks ago, there was a for sale sign on the property, so that could be what's happening. But at the end of the day, I think the applicant didn't want to complete the work that we were requesting as a part of the code on the project. Staff recommends now.
So Gunnar, you're asking a few questions.
Sure.
Um. I'm not, so I'm not against what happened. I just kind of want to understand what it is we were asking him to do, you know, specifically to make his property appropriate for the SUP.
I can go to the site plan, and I mentioned sort of the case history, which got a little confusing when there was the swap of ownership and things of that nature. There were some building improvements that we had asked for. Again, they had done some things, not as we had originally requested in the original SUP that we were asking them to correct. We allowed them to go to just let it be for the TCO, but one, but told him
What is, what's TCO?
I apologize. The temporary, the certificate of occupancies, temporary certificate of occupancies, so related to the building permit originally, from the original application approval and subsequent building permit. So there were some building improvements. There were also some site improvements. The special use permit specifically asked for a few things related to our commercial design guidelines. So there's some commercial design guideline standards, and it's a little different here. Typically, if we're doing like a commercial development for commercial design guidelines, that does not require specifically this type of SUP. You can seek a deviation from them, from the planning commission, and that happens on occasion. But because those standards are included in the SUP language of the ordinance, he would have had to sought a boza. Again, I think it got a little complicated. The applicant didn't agree with our interpretation, quote unquote, of the zoning code. He felt that he could build it as of right. And while automotive uses are allowed, and I believe this is C2, I apologize if I'm incorrect there, but C2 or C3, I think it's C2. Although it's allowed by right use, that's one part of a very large code of ordinances, right? So you have to do that plus the SUP, and so he didn't believe he needed an SUP, and at that point, I think we we were unable to come to terms and move forward together.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry all that happened. The reason I pulled it was is that that was the first time that that piece of property looked decent for 10 years. And he cleaned it up quite nicely from the outside, you know, just from a layperson looking at it. I was quite happy with what I, with what I was seeing. So I'm sorry that that happened, but thanks, Gunner. I just needed to, you know, understand what the heck was going on. So thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go through the motions here. Open the public hearing, ask the clerk, received any notification from the public who wish to express their comments in favor of this item?
None were received.
And is there anyone that we have present would like to speak in support of this?
Seeing none.
Any comments that are in opposition?
Seeing none as well.
And no one in the lobby, I assume?
No one, sir.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing. Any members of the commission have any more comments or questions? No, I'll entertain a motion in a second. This is again a recommended, a motion for denial.
Well, I move that we deny as presented by Mr. Hand. This is Phil.
I am second.
You have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Johnson. Kane.
Hi.
Markley.
Hi.
Walters.
Hi.
Philbrook.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Burrows.
Hi.
Townsend.
Hi.
McCarronan.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
Vote is 10 to 0. That motion carries.
Now we go to set aside item. SP 2021-047 Albert Walker, special use permit for horses on residential property at 3703, 3707, and 3633 Bell Crossing, and 3701, 3702, and 3706 North 37th Street, and 3655 Sorter Drive, submitted by Mr. Hand. Mr. Hand, some opening remarks, and let's queue up Mr. Walker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is an SUP to keep horses on this property. It's located in the Sorter Drive area of Unified Government. You can see it here as it, as you can tell from the multiple addresses, Mr. Walker has several parcels that become one property. You can see because of the leftover, I'll just say weird plating in the Sorter Drive area, this is technically public right of way still, and this is technically public right of way still. There's also some plating issues on, on the actual roadway. This is common in the Sorter Drive area. But when you put it all together, it's about one and a half acres. It would be about one and a half acres if he were to vacate these two public rights away. You can see from some of these pictures, we did work with the Conservation District and Animal Control on this project specifically. Animal Control has a case on the property regarding a horse that was in bad condition. Mr. Walker contends that he was trying to help his neighbor with that horse and bring it back to health. Aside from that, the Conservation District visited the property and noted several issues regarding ground cover, regarding the erosion into the drainage ditch. There are some general code violations on the property specifically for us. There's an unpermitted building. And also because this is still zoned R1, it is technically in a secondary structure without a primary structure, which requires its own variance. At the end of the day, the, the Conservation District does not recommend that Mr. Walker keep aboard any horses on this property. We've received no letters of support, no opposition. There are quite a few NOVs on the property. Staff recommends denial.
Could you please not use an acronym for everything?
Sorry, the NOV stands for Notice of Violation. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. I now would ask Mr. Walker to present, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Albert Henry Walker. Address, my living address is 5758 Georgia Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, 66104. All of those addresses that we have there is portions that I purchased. Some from the city and some from a neighbor that was, had land, right beside that land.
So, Mr. Walker, you are asking to be able to maintain or board houses, horses on this property? The, it was recommended for denial. It's your opportunity to present your case, why you should be allowed to aboard the horses that you request.
Okay, sir. Three or four reasons, I guess. Hopefully you all received those pictures that I took of that property and brought to Mr. Farley and said it would get them to you. I brought the deed to that land that the gentleman mentioned about that horse. I've asked him to take that off my record and stop mentioning that horse, you know, anywhere towards me. That deed showed when I bought that property, the young man that owned that horse, I had nothing to do with him. I had nothing to do with that horse. Okay? Only thing I came to my attention about that horse is, was that horse needed some help. I paid that horse. I gave that horse two half a round bell of hay. It was not my horse. I had nothing to do with that horse. And they keep charging me of putting that horse up like I was neglecting animal. The young lady that on the farm with me, she's the one called Animal Control about that horse. We had talked to Mr. Marvin about that horse on several occasions. Now, they telling me that, you know, the land was attached to my land. Sir, I feel like that is unjust and it's unfair. If somebody's land attached to your land and they're not doing proper thing on their land, they shouldn't charge you for it, but that's what they doing to me. Then they turn around and said my land is trashy. Those pictures does not show trash on my land. And I took more pictures of that same land and some more of it to show you what that land really looked like. The land is not trashy. When I purchased it, it was big time trashy. Even the land I purchased from the city, it was not kept up. The weeds were not cut. Those e ways there was not maintained. Especially that last one down there. That guy had that first one, had we fixed back up. But that last one down there, that thing was completely demolished. The concrete, when you go across that creek, had broken up. It was falling all down in the creek. Water was running somewhere everywhere. Had different little stream there. I had to get all that concrete out of that stream. The pictures that I gave him showed that where I put, bought curving and put in that stream, and I packed it and put rocks and things around it and dirt and asphalt. I bought some asphalt and put over it. That's the only way you can go across that creek. I was told, sir, that in purchasing that land on the other side, that those two e way that have not been used by the city, the city was doing nothing with it. They didn't have lights up in there, no gas line or nothing of that sort. That if I bought both the land on both side of that, and I bought that land from the city, I purchased it, and they said they would be, they used the term they would be vacated. And that I own the land on both And that if I own the land on both sides, you know, I could get those e ways, they would vacate them or something to that effect. So that's what I did. I bought that and like I told them, there's more than one and a half acres there. I put in for a surveyor. And this guy telling me it'd be about three weeks and I told him I needed to wait, I had this meeting with y'all. Only problem we having about surveying is they telling me to have these two e ways surveyed. And then have my land surveyed. Now, nobody says that I should be having those two e ways surveyed. If you're not gonna give them to me, it's not my land. So I need to know why do you want me to pay two thousand dollars to have two e ways surveyed separately from the land? When one of y'all telling me to survey the whole thing, the other actually telling me I'm gonna have to get two different surveys done. And that's the only problem we got, everything else they told me to do, I did it. Only reason that building is still there is because the inspector told me that well, it's best for me not to mess with the building, not to try to even repair those stalls anymore. Because I have to wait to see what y'all say, you know, and I would either have to repair those stalls or take them down. Those stalls, all except for one of them, was up there when I purchased that land. I've straightened them up some. But there's nothing to that land that I did other than clean it up and make that land more presentable. And everybody down in there talk about how nice that land look now. Everybody's talking about how nice that land is being kept. You can go down there now and see for yourself, you can run on that land, now you can drive on that land. I can haul a stand up down there when I bought that land from that boy. And if nothing else, at least can we postpone this until I get it surveyed? I got one survey that said, you know, if I still had a land, maybe he can get to it in about three weeks or something like that. But I was told last year, and yeah, they said, and I think it's gotta be in a minute, they said that I refused to get a survey. Sir, that's not true. I called several surveyor last year and they told me they wouldn't be available probably till October. And that's when I started back to calling. And I told Mr. Mike Furly, that's when I was gonna call him back. So I don't see anything for them to charge me with that horse. For them to declare my land was trashy and it's not. For them to declare that I wouldn't get a surveyor is not true. And if you have those other pictures, you can see them for yourself. That land probably about one of the cleanest piece of properties down there.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'll now open the public hearing and ask the clerk if it's received any notification from the public who wish to express comments in favor of this item?
None were received, Mayor.
And is there anyone present online or in the lobby would like to speak in favor of this?
Seeing none.
We have Melvin Williams.
Okay, Mr. Williams, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Melvin Williams, twenty nine thirty nine North Forty Third Street. This will be a prime example to working with somebody in the community, the man that stated his case. He didn't cleaned up his property. At least, at least extend the man the honors of extending what he's, his request. Stretch it out a few months, then come back to the table with him. This is a prime example of working with your community. So, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else present?
Seeing no others at this time, Mayor.
Is there anyone that the clerk received any notification from the public who wish to express their comments in opposition?
We received none, Mayor.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition?
Seeing none as well.
All right, I'll now close the public hearing. Mr. Walker, would you like to make any closing comments?
I've, I've, I actually lost, I was trying to call a friend of mine. He was calling me on the phone a while ago and I wouldn't answer it because I was on here. I was trying to get the man's name. Sir, this situation to me frankly is kind of sticky. There's a driver up there. And gotta forgive me going this route. But he is a African American. He got two dump trucks. Then cleaned his property up good and had asphalt pulled up there. You know, to park his trucks on so he don't be on no grass, no dirt, nothing like that. He been up there for, for years with them trucks. Now, he's been told he had, he'd have to move his trucks, okay? Now, on the other side, you got people moving in there with trucks, equipment and everything. And they've been given the okay to have all that. The problem we have with that, sir, is that when the majority of these incidents comes up, it's always the blacks that don't get any consideration for anything we done. That land up there been predominantly owned by blacks. And now, sir, if you check the record, those are the owners one that haven't got an okay from you all about anything. That's the blacks. You can't keep anything up there. How is it that they can move in there with trucks? And when I had my company AJW, that's what that end up is on my lot down there. They was forcing me to take two trucks off of land up there that I bought in the company name. Two trucks. This guy down there with probably eleven trucks, equipment, other bobcats and everything else, machine. How, how is this going? How are we supposed to take that? How am I supposed to proceed that? Am I supposed to look at that and keep saying that's a coincidence, which doesn't happen in more than one case? They talking to me about one container. I had two up there. I moved a container away from up there because they told me move it. Paid thirty five hundred dollars for it, I got fifteen hundred dollars to get rid of. Right up the street from me, there's a guy got three containers sitting on dirt. And nobody act like they see. Another man just moved in there. He got a container on his lot. I asked him, well, excuse me, I didn't ask him. Brother Tyrone Wallace asked, man, how can you have a container on your lot? He said he had a, he got a special permit for it. We have never been told anything about getting a permit for those containers until this Hispanic person came up there. I've been down in there for twelve years trying to buy land. You're not talking to a rich man, but I'm not the poorest man you ever seen. I've had money to buy that land up there. I went down there on several occasions trying to buy some land. Nobody had two pieces of land where you had maybe two acres here, two or three acres there combined, so you could put five acres together. But other peoples came down there, now they buying five acres. I paid fifteen thousand dollars for that louder piece of land I got down there. This man paid two thousand and five hundred dollars for a piece of land that he gets five acres, five point four acres. You telling me not even after I done paid the fifteen thousand, bought the two pieces of land I bought, then turn around and I done bought two pieces of land from the city that I still don't have but one point five acres. I ain't gonna have. Sir, it just don't look right. It don't smell right. The city's telling us to do everything. They even told me once that I need to put up a white picket fence. And they want me to put a white picket fence. And you told me I could build a house. Oh, I told my, you know, put all that work in there, go and build you a little three room house, three bedroom house down there. I got to looking into it, sir. Y'all don't even have sewage line ready down through there. You got kids down there going to school. You don't know them kids going to school to get education, they crazy, they walk in the middle of the street. But I forgot, they have to walk in the middle of the street, sir, because you don't even have sidewalk down there. They walk around with lights on top of their head. That's because y'all don't have proper lighting down there. You sit around there and tell us about all we should do and y'all not doing anything. And a lot of that work should have been done. It's been pointed out to be done and none of it is being taught. And he tell me about putting up a white picket fence. I told him ain't no way in the world I'll go put up no white picket fence down there because number one, it doesn't make no sense. Number two, my horses eat wood. I done chained them fences twice down there. Why y'all talking about me being, you know, non cooperative? He tells me to put up horse wire, I put up horse wire. My horses wasn't getting out, I had no problem. He come back to him, I gotta take that wire down. Now, I need you to explain to me why I gotta take horse wire down, you tell me put horse wire up. It's six feet tall and that's too tall. You gotta have it four feet. Sir, I don't have a group, I don't have a crew to help me. I got a bobcat that's broke down, now I gotta take it to the shop, my money. I put that fence up practically by myself all the way around there. I had to take it down and put up four feet wire. I bought poles because he didn't want me to have wooden poles in the front and those T poles ran down through the side. I had to take all those T poles back up. And buy wooden pole with fourteen dollars a pole to go all the way around that land. I've done that. I've done everything they told me to do. And every time I do one thing, they come up with three more. It's not making any sense, sir.
Mr. Walker, move on because I believe there might be some questions for you from the commission. Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't he say that, that he'd like to have this be held back until he could get it surveyed?
That was, that what I think we heard.
If, if I, I said that, I said he can at least do that and let me see how much land it is because I'm finna get the service, I put in for the survey before. And, and they, they even put that down, they were putting that toward me, come out, I refuse to get a survey. Sir, that was not true. I'm putting in for a surveyor to survey that whole land. But if you tell me that I got to survey their land twice, I need to know why do I have to pay for land that one of you all told me you was gonna vacate? And if I bought that land on both sides, like I said a while ago, they would give me those two little thing. Now they telling me to have that survey and other, sir, I'm gonna have my land surveyed. The whole thing. But for me to have those two things surveyed separately, me, just tell me, are you telling me I need to do that? Because one, one guy told me that the city actually owed me money in, in a explanation. Because your land, I mean, your street, Bell Crossing, run through my land according to his map.
Gunner, does he have to have it surveyed once or twice? I mean, what, what's going on, is it, is it once or is it twice and why would it be twice?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. The SUP in front of you does not require a survey. Mr. Walker had inquired about what it would take to claim or to have this public right of way become his private property, which, which, which is a vacation. A vacation requires a survey to be processed. And, and having one point three acres versus one point five acres is, as we understand it from the Conservation District, irrelevant, there's no threshold that he's going to acquire when he takes this land. He is currently fenced, well, he moved it, but he had previously fenced it off as his own, which is why we had explained to him that there was actually these public rights away that he was using. There's a bunch of plating issues in this area and we all know it.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Walker said that he provided more pictures and information. Was that provided to us tonight?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I didn't receive anything, he may have given it to my planner and we may not have included that in the public, or excuse me, in the staff report. The staff report that you have in front of you includes the original pictures from when the application was originally submitted in May.
Okay, so what? So even after the staff report's done and saying applicant like Mr. Walker provides more information or more pictures or what have you, do those not make it into the record?
No, we probably should have included the pictures. I think the point I would make here is that the Conservation District, regardless of the pictures or the status of the property is, is, is again, I think for them, it's the size of the property and how that is part of or primarily part of the reason they recommended me recommend it out.
Okay.
Originally, I believe the original request was for four horses. And again, the topography, the landscape, the wood, the amount of trees on the property, all of these things are factored into the Conservation District's understanding of whether a livestock should be on these properties.
Okay. And I, I, I understand that what the conversation, the Conservation District's view on it and everything, but my point and what I'm having trouble with is that there is more information that the applicant provided but was not given to us. Now, will that information change? We don't know because we don't, we haven't seen that, those pictures. And so if we're gonna make a decision, we should have all that's been provided. Now, I know that that information was all, wasn't also provided to the planning commission because that was after the fact. But that, that's just the point I'm trying to get at, that it seems that there were more information, but we don't have it in front of us. So I just ask that going forward, if there is, please do your due diligence of making sure that if information is provided to you, that it's provided to us as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor Melissa Bynum. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Hand, the slide with the verbiage about the acreage and Conservation District information, thank you. So when you say it's irrelevant, whether it's one point three or one point five, I guess, I guess the explanation is that it's not enough land. And it's not the correct topography for the total area of land for that many horses, would that be a fair statement?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, I believe that is correct, yes, you can read here that it is both the size, type and quality, if you will, of the property.
And I see that item one A, our animal services unit, I think is what ASU is, is opposed to horses at any of the addresses listed. And I think what we're doing is combining all of these parcels into one, is that correct?
Yeah, all the parcels, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, all the parcels are currently owned by Mr. Walker. Again, you can see the dates on here and
I'd see what you said.
You can see the dates on here which are, which required, which, which occurred, excuse me, prior to Mr. Walker owning the property. And we didn't know that, I guess, until we got some information that I still have not seen.
I really would defer to Commissioner Townsend and I did see her hand up. But I would maybe preface anything she might have to say by maybe reminding the commission and the public that multiple years ago, certainly pre COVID, we had in this area, in this whole entire area up here along Bell Crossing and Sorter Drive, multiple complaints from residents in the area about a whole variety of things that were going on and we did a blanket mailing, if you will, to all of the property owners in this area and that may very well have precluded Mr. Walker's purchase of these parcels. But we were trying to let everyone in this area know what the rules are for example, a structure on a parcel where there's no house, what you would have to do to come into compliance with our zoning laws. We held a meeting at City Hall with dozens of the property owners in this area and, and our staff worked pretty diligently Dozens of the property owners in this area and and our staff worked pretty diligently. On a case-by-case basis to help people in this area bring their properties into compliance. Uh, I, again, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Townsend. Because I know that she was also actively involved in. All of the efforts that we were undertaking in this area not that very many years ago.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Townsend, District One. Well, I'll pick up where Commissioner Bynum. Uh, left off. Yes, there was a very concerted effort to clean up the area. In and around the section Bell Crossing and. The other area Sorter Drive, uh, where. Mr. Walker's application is close to. So, Mr. Walker, I want to commend you if you've done improvements to that land. That's great. We want everybody to clean up their property, so I commend you for what you've done. The real issue here on this application is whether or not seven horses. Uh, can be permitted to be on these properties. Given the limited. Uh, acreage that we have, and I mean the the commission from this report have. Which is shown as one point five five acres. The conservation, I guess, the animal control. Says that for that. Amount of space. It's barely enough for one horse, so that is really what's an issue here. I'm also concerned that in the materials that the commissioners have. Professional assessments by Animal Services. Was against having any horses, uh, there based on the topography and what's there. Uh, and also the Conservation District. Uh, was against this because of lack of vegetation. Uh, on the property, severe erosion. And concern that animal waste was going into the stream. So, um, I think. Under the these circumstances. And based on your requests, now whether you get the survey or not. Uh, I don't think it's unreasonable. To grant. Uh, more time. To again evaluate what the current circumstances are. To make any determination if indeed there's more than. One point five five acres here that we're dealing with. And what the current. Uh, situation is with regard to how the property looks, how the stream looks, is there manure there? Again, this is residential property, that's the other issue. So my motion is to, um. Have this matter. Only word set aside necessarily. But have this matter come back to us. Uh, in two months. And hopefully that would allow whatever. Reevaluation of the amount of acreage. May be done. And what the current situation is at that time. With, um. The conservation people and animal services people because these are professionals in that area. So that is my motion, actually granting what Mr. Walker asked for in this case additional time. That's.
Commissioner Mike Kane, second.
I need to ask a legal, so, um. We are not going to bring forward the motion, and we don't bring forward the motion that was came brought to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a separate motion, is that correct?
Um, that's correct. I'm sorry, Misty Brown, Chief Counsel. So the motion would be not to deny it, but to set aside this matter for reconsideration in a two-month period.
Thank you. We have the motion and a second. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Melissa Bynum. I just have one lingering question, and that is. For Mr. Walker, if the horses are here now. And I don't know if they are. Uh, are you able to have them be elsewhere while this is all under consideration?
I can have, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I could, I can move. Uh, some of those horses. Matter of fact, I've sold some of them since we've even been talking about this. Uh, got some more people supposed to be coming down. Looking at some more of them. I'm trying to get down, that's why we come up with the four. I've had fifteen horses down there. I'm down to nine horses.
And I'm just hoping that there's a place for, you know, the horses to be while we sort through the matter.
Thank you.
Okay, am I allowed to at least, in in the meantime, I'm just asking. Is it gonna be feasible if I have just two horses down there? I get, I can get rid of. I've found a place for the majority of them. I can get rid of practically all of them, but two. Uh, and no horse will be close to that water.
I think that'd be a question we follow up with Mr. Hand. Correct, Mr. Hand?
This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Technically, there should be no horses on the property.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor, if I may before, check with counsel, is this a six or an eight vote to change that denial?
Not a change, it's a set aside.
Set aside, okay, and it stays at six, correct?
That's correct, about six.
Thank you, sir. Roll call. Johnson?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Merkley?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McCarron?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Vote is ten to zero, that motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the planning and zoning non-consent agenda. Item number one is consideration of the Armored Del area master plan. And ask Mr. Hand to make opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I'm actually going to pass it off to our, um, lead for our advanced planning division in the Planning and Urban Design Department, Ms. Kim Portillo. She might need to be promoted.
I am here. Good evening, Kim Portillo, long-range planner for the Unified Government. I'm happy to be here to present to you guys today. We also have our consultant team, Port, who's gonna give you guys a brief presentation. I just wanted to say. Thank you for everyone who has been involved in the in the plan this far. It's really been a great process. We've been working on this for. Um, just over a year now. And we've been really involved with the community, with the Armored Del Renewal Association. We've had a lot of interaction with the businesses down there. So we are excited and looking forward to, um, presenting that to you today, and I also want to mention that between the Planning Commission approval, we did. Have some modifications to the land use plan. So, um, Gunner, I don't know if you want to speak to that. At all?
Sure, just real quick, again, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. So, um, we pulled this because we wanted to give the presentation, but we also pulled it technically because we found a couple of parcels that we had. Um, missed, uh, designated in terms of land use. Uh, there was one, for instance, in the middle of the Kansas River that, uh, got left out from being designated open space. We had to make that change. That alone would have required. Uh, a supermajority vote, um, since it is different from the Planning Commission's approval. Additionally. Uh, we had, uh, in error left the previous single-family, uh, land use designation, which was a part of the nineteen ninety-four. Uh, map amendment of Armored Del. Um, we've since changed that over to what is now, uh, the more common. Um, a part of the citywide master plan, which is urban, uh. Urban density residential, similar, it's the same density residential as, um, Central Avenue is for all their single-family homes as well as, uh, the Northeast area for all their single-family homes. So. Technically, this will require a supermajority, um, for approval, and with that, I think, unless Kim had anything else to say, we can pass it off. Again, this is not the same presentation you guys heard last month. It's an abbreviated version, so we're trying to move as fast as we can.
Okay, uh, should I stick over then? Okay, great. Hi, uh, this is Andrew Modrell of the consultant team, planning team for the Armored Del area master plan. Um, we, I, can everyone see my screen that I'm sharing right now with the. The cover, as Gunner and Kim said, this is an abbreviated presentation. I think this is the. You know, we had a couple informational presentations, and this is a kind of abbreviated version of. What I hope you all have had a chance to review, uh, the quite extensive document that we've built over the last. Ten months with, uh, with our consultant team, with the community, uh, cataloging all of the input, stakeholder inputs, steering committee input. Uh, that established the priorities and direction for a a master plan that we feel is really. Uh, captures, uh, pretty much everything we heard in the last ten months, and we're really proud of how extensive, um, and detailed it is. So. Uh, if you can see this, the schedule, there was a, the steering committee started meeting before this. Uh, timeline begins in January twenty twenty-one, and the Kansas City, uh. The KCDC Design Studio began meeting before this timeline begins, but this is showing us, uh, at the culmination of what has been a. A ten-month process to document existing conditions, community engagement, build a draft master plan, collect feedback. On that draft master plan, compile that into a final master plan that. Uh, has been circulated, it's on the UG website, but also on our Armored Del Strong dot com website is updated with that final. Um, draft master, or sorry, final master plan that we're reviewing. So. To just recap a little bit of the process, I know that many of you in this, um, in meeting have have heard. Uh, this before or have participated extensively in this process already. So in the interest of time, I'm just gonna again move through. Things quite quickly and encourage everyone to to please, um, download and review, uh, the document that we've produced as an outcome of this process, but. Uh, the, I think the key takeaway is to point to are that that we've engaged. People, our outreach team, our partner organizations, community experts, and the steering committee. Uh, that it was essentially a very intensive process of collaboration, discussion, debate. Uh, and establishing priorities from that. The tools we used were surveys, posters, postcards, voicemail, website. And events aren't listed here, but the numerous events, workshops, focus groups, uh, and opportunities again to convene around the ideas that we were discussing. To make sure that we were, they were reflecting what we were hearing from the community and stakeholders, and make sure that the the kind of priority ideas were rising to the top. Uh, this is a, maybe one of the best photos, I think, uh, that we were able to collect during this whole process. I think this is really. Indicative of the power of the outreach team that we were able to assemble of Armored Del residents who were paid as part of our consultant team. To sit down with their friends and neighbors and go through our survey. Uh, and and questionnaire, it's been twenty minutes with folks who might not be pulling this up on their smartphone or taking the time out of work to. Log on to a Survey Monkey or, you know, fill out a postcard and mail it in. That we had actual, you know, we had a community members talking to community members and collecting their input. And this is just a beautiful photo, especially at peak, you know, COVID with the mask inside and and talking about. The store, Armored Del stories, priorities from the community. So, uh, this was a. You know, example of especially early on in the process as we were kicking, kicking off. Um, here's a few images of. A couple online workshops where we were using Miro boards to have a really interactive. Meeting with community members, stakeholders, collect input, as well as a focus group at John Fisk Elementary, and then this is a. An image on the bottom right of a plan that we had of oversized big prints there at John Fisk also as part of a community event in June. Uh, parallel to all this community outreach, we did an extremely deep dive into the history of Armored Del, which is just probably one of the most fascinating and rich histories. Uh, in all of Kansas City and is really directly tied to the history. Uh, of Kansas City and what kind of how Kansas City grew to prominence, uh, at the confluence of the Kansas and Missouri rivers. Um, with that Armored Del as, you know, again, this community that exists entirely in a floodplain. Surrounded by industry, rail, river, it makes it incredibly unique. Um, and that's, you know, completely tied to its industry and labor history that we catalog in the report. Also, its Hispanic heritage and the culture that emerged and thrived, uh, in the Armored Del Argentine area. But then also in the sixties and seventies, the the, well, and I guess even before the the redlining, but. Referring to the sixties and seventies of of essentially what to do with Armored Del because of extensive flood damage and. Uh, the what you see in the upper right, uh, and lower right, or, you know, public community housing projects that were. Uh, denied, uh, that didn't move forward. And in some ways, uh. After those big efforts were squashed in the sixties, Armored Del was left to kind of languish, uh, and another flood hasn't. Um, vanquished Armored Del since nineteen fifty-one, uh, but the the industry is, uh. Continually encroached on the Armored Del community and has always, it always is this kind of. Binary relationship of one side of the street to the other, or the trucks going down through the neighborhoods, but essentially a neighborhood that has. Endured for the last seventy years with, uh, a really, a pretty significant lack of investment and and resources. While the question always hung in the air of what? Is the future of Armored Del? Is there a future for Armored Del? This process, um, kind of definitively set in twenty twenty-one. Here we are, Armored Del's here to stay. Armored Del is a strong place that endured, um. These, uh, over a hundred years of kind of challenges and neglect, and then now we have an opportunity to deliver the resources. Uh, to Armored Del that they so richly deserve. So looking at this on the left, isolated, vulnerable. Segregated, neglected, deteriorated, disinvested is. What happens when there's no commitment to Armored Del's future, or questions about whether Armored Del should be where it is, or. Uh, whether it should all be industrial, or whether another flood is coming. Um, especially with the investment in the levees and investment in the stormwater infrastructure and investment all around. Uh, the West Bottoms, the the Rock Island Bridge, the the kind of future of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, we see. This moment for Armored Del to be accessible, safe, empowered, included, attractive, and stimulated. So the report lays out a roadmap for how to get there, identifying five key focus areas. And actions and strategies associated with each of those areas. So those range from the neighborhood core of Armored Del and how to really strengthen that as. Uh, the strong neighborhood in the very center of the of the Armored Del area. And there's a long list of these strategies in the report that outline not only, you know, the title of the strategy that you see here, but who are the community partners? What are the funding resources? What are the benchmarks for year one, year three? Uh, community partners, everything, um, to try to, uh, and also prior priorities for these, this list and implementation strategies for this list. Um, the second was the commercial corridors, Osage in particular, Kansas Avenue, Tenth Street, Twelfth Street. Uh, but looking to rebuild these corridors that were. Essentially their existing corridors that that came to prominence with the streetcar era in Kansas City and still reflect that. Legacy with their kind of density and street frontage, but have slowly declined along with Armored Del, and these are strategies for strengthening. And rebuilding and infilling these corridors to create walkable, uh, community. Uh, hubs in the middle of the, uh, Armored Del neighborhood. Uh, the industrial ring. The, there is no, obviously denying the 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 history of the the stockyards, the history of transportation, the history of. The river, the history of industrial production, manufacturing, and all of how important this, uh, area is to all of Kansas City. And to have that, you know, thrive and balance with the Armored Del neighborhood is one of our goals, and there's some very easy ways to to. To move toward that balance that include optimizing truck routes and kind of negating some of the impacts that. Uh, some of the industries have on the Armored Del neighborhood, but also drawing new businesses, uh, to this area. And growing Armored Del and strengthening the industrial kind of ring around. Armored Del, pro, the the areas specifically in close proximity to the neighborhood that could support small and medium-sized. Businesses onto, uh, the larger, uh, businesses around the perimeter. And and the river, which brings us to the river. Again, this is a, uh, we we were starting to see, um. Kansas City start to face the river again, uh, and look at the river as a resource and as a a citywide amenity. Armored Del is is right on the the edge of the neighborhood, so looking at connections to levy trails. And create new community hubs and access to the river, and really again turn, I guess, to the river as. A pretty incredible and unique resource to Kansas City and Armored Del. So all of those strategies are outlined there. Finally, the fifth area is the historic West Bottoms. And this area is, um. We we've kind of come to the conclusion that it is deserving of its its kind of own master plan study. That's one of the recommendations in the report. Is that, uh, as this kind of. Area that's technically within the Armored Del area, master plan study area, we just explored a few different development scenarios and reviewed them with the community and the steering committee. Uh, as far as potential for a mixed mixed-use district on the river, or the scenario shows a riverfront kind of destination. Uh, or civic, more of a civic district, or it could be a logistics and industrial hub, but it really is a kind of pivotal property. Or or a kind of area that that deserves its kind of a deeper dive than. We're able to target during this study. So, uh, more recommendations and background, uh, are in the report there. So. That's all I have, uh, to share on behalf of our team, uh, our our partners in the project. This has been. We're coming up at the end of ten months of of really, uh. Amazing work. We're really proud of what we've put together and, uh, couldn't have done it without the close collaboration and input. Of so many kind of willing participants and what everyone is. and input of so many kind of willing participants in what everyone has recognized as a really important process for a really significant community and part of Kansas City. So thank you for that. Happy to answer any questions. I turned it over to whoever wants to speak next. Thank you again for listening to the different ways I've run through this presentation over the last month and a half.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. As the clerk, we received any notification from the public. Wish to express comments in favor of this item?
Uh, none were received, Mayor.
Uh, did I not see Deanie Sanders, uh, early on want to speak to this item?
Let me see. She's not on our list. But she popped up here. She's still on.
Mr. Mayor, this is going to end Director Plan and Resign. I believe there's a couple people who might want to speak tonight.
All right.
Yep. Deanie Sanders is still here.
Uh, Deanie Sanders, please state your name and address for the record.
This is Deanie Sanders, also Claudine Sanders, eighty-three oh nine Isabel Street, Kansas City, Kansas six-six-one-one-two. I am the Vice President of the Armadale Renewal Association, and we wanted to take this time to provide support for the Armadale Master Plan. And thank you for all the efforts that have been put into our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. And did we have someone else, Mr. Dyckman?
I, Mayor, I'm seeing none in the attendees roster there or in the panelist side here.
All right. Is there anyone present would like to speak in favor?
Seeing none as well.
Have we received any notification from the public wish to express comments and opposition?
We did not.
And is there anyone public would like to speak in opposition?
Seeing none, Mayor.
Thank you. I closed the public hearing. Any members of the commission have any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Burrows at large, move for approval.
McKernan District two, second.
I have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
The vote is ten to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That's it for planning. Yeah, I think I'm losing track on my. One second here.
While I have the microphone, I just want to say thank you for everyone's support along this long process. So before.
I think we're now at the public hearing agenda. Did I miss something?
Mayor, we have the regular consent.
Oh, thank you.
Prior to.
Thank you. So the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting will now move to the regular portion of the agenda. Does any member of the commission or county administrator wish to set aside any item on the regular consent agenda? An item is not set aside, all items on the regular consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
Melissa Bynum moved to approve all items on the regular consent agenda.
Thank you. I think that was Commissioner Kane with the second.
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. You have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
The vote is ten to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing to consider creating a community improvement district and approving a development agreement with Legend Hotel for construction of a new Fairfield Inn at North Ninety-Eighth Street at Parallel. I'd ask Kathleen Carter to make some opening remarks.
Mayor, this is Patrick Waters with the Legal Department. If I could, uh, start the presentation?
Sure.
Um, so you may recall, we were here last month. Uh, this was a developer initiated process. Uh, the developer submitted a petition for the CID in July, and we had our first public hearing last month. The commission requested that staff go back and work with the developer and bring back a proposed development agreement. So that is what we are here for tonight. Again, this is the location, uh, in between the Freddy's and the Compass Minerals soccer fields off of Ninety-Eighth and Parallel. These are some pictures supplied by the developer, um, some renderings and pictures of what the, uh, hotel would be like. It will be a Fairfield Inn. And, uh, developer has confirmed there will be an indoor pool, um, a thousand square foot conference room, um, among other items. So some of the, uh, the details of the development agreement, the developer is requesting a one point five percent sales tax that would go on top of the existing, uh, state and local sales tax at the hotel. His total project budget, uh, to build out the hotel is about ten point seven million. He is requesting, uh, about one point five million in CID incentives. Uh, and the developer can speak to this, um, but that is basically, uh, um, as, uh, comes from increased costs, um, since he originally designed this. If the developer does not meet the, uh, local minority and, uh, women, um, goals for construction, that CID cap would be reduced by ten percent then. This would be pay as you go reimbursement. Uh, there's no bonds, uh, bonds will not be issued for this. Um, we structured the development agreement to make it clear that we will only reimburse the developer for hard construction costs, um, land acquisition, attorney's fees, architectural and things like that would not be included. With that, that's all I have. If the, uh, developer wishes to, uh, speak to this, I believe he is on the, the phone. Uh, Ruben?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, Ruben or not here with Legend Hospital, Hotel Group, um, from Overland Park, Kansas. Thank you for this opportunity and, um, thank you, Patrick, for the introduction and the slides. Um, thank you for the commission for, for looking at this, um, CID request. Um, with respect to this request, we are looking to have this additional sales tax of one point five percent. Would you be paid by customers visiting our property and, and renting rooms and, and not by the U G themselves? So I just want to make, make that clear that it would be a, um, a additional sales tax that's paid by basically tourism.
Thank you, sir. I'll now open the public hearing. Ask the clerk, we receive any notification from the public wish to express comments in favor of this item?
Uh, none were received, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor?
Seeing none.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition?
Seeing none as well.
Anyone in the building who would like to speak in opposition?
None at this time, sir.
All right, now close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner McKernan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, uh, Mr. Waters, I just want to confirm something that I confirmed when we were in standing committee. This property will, uh, pay full property taxes to the unified government, correct?
Correct. There are no IRBs or property tax abatements associated with.
And it will pay full sales tax before the CID to the unified government. And it will pay all transient guest tax. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, so the one, um, just caveat that it is within the, um, the Starbonne District. So this is layered on top. This is separate from, um, the Starbonne though.
That's fine, but full property tax to the U G, full transient guest tax to the U G.
Correct.
And contributing to the health and vitality of a Starbonne District.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I entertain, actually, we need two motions. Oh, Commissioner Bynum?
Well, Mayor, I was gonna make a motion, so, um.
Let me clarify, let me clarify if you would. Uh, two motions. The first motion is a, uh, an ordinance approving the community improvement district.
So moved. Bynum.
Have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Philbrook, second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
No.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Vote is nine to one. That motion carries.
Thank you. Now a motion on the ordinance approving the development agreement.
Commissioner Bynum, so moved.
Second.
Ramirez.
Have a second by Commissioner Philbrook. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
The vote is ten to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that takes item number one. Under the standing committee agenda, we have an item that was added to tonight's agenda. Resolution switching the meeting times for the neighborhood and community development and the economic development finance standing committee meetings, uh, and ask staff to make some brief remarks.
Mayor Doug Bach, County Administrator, this item was advanced at the request of our standing committees, Commissioner McKernan and Commissioner Burrows. Um, those committees had looked at the order in which we were going through. We were hearing land bank items that were taking us a couple of hours, uh, oftentimes requiring us to keep developers and many other members of the public waiting for economic development and finance items to move forward. Uh, thus they requested to switch it. So the E D N F meeting would be first, and then they could handle the, uh, neighborhood and community development late items after that.
Thank you. Commissioner Markley chaired the meeting. You have any additional comments?
No, this is just fast tracked, so it could apply, uh, to the upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
McKernan District two, move to approve.
Kane District five, second.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. I did not hear Commissioner Burrows. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have three items under the administrator's agenda. All three items consist of transferring ownership of the three automobile dealerships in the area east of I four thirty-five. Uh, staff can make a consolidated presentation of all three items. A separate vote is required for each one. Uh, it's Catherine Carter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Afternoon, or afternoon, good evening. Uh, this is Catherine Carter, Director of Economic Development. Um, yeah, as, uh, the mayor mentioned, I'll be speaking to all three and then there'll be a separate vote for each one. And these are the Victory Ford, Victory Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, and the Premier Auto Outlet KC that are over at four thirty-five and Parallel. Uh, what is happening here is, uh, solely an amending of the assignment and assumption agreement as they are breaking apart the ownership from, uh, the dealership, kind of the operations will be a, a separate owner from the actual real estate. They will actually be the same ownership group. Um, but they are just kind of forming a, a separate LLC to specifically deal with the, uh, real estate versus the, uh, dealership, um, operations. So for us, this is a, a positive thing because we're, uh, just having kind of more, more people that we are, uh, have, have, ensuring that they are, you know, remaining, uh, steadfast in exactly what they are required to do for the development agreement. Um, so now we're just adding, adding this separate group to ensure that we have them, uh, on the hook for everything that they have promised to do.
Any questions or comments from the commission? All right. I entertain a motion on the agreement for the Ford project.
Commissioner Mike Kane, District five, move for approval.
Markley, second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. A motion for the Chrysler project.
Commissioner Mike Kane, Fifth District, move for approval.
Markley, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
And a motion for the auto outlet project.
Commissioner Mike Kane, Fifth District, move for approval.
Markley, second.
All right, roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the regular meeting, and we are adjourned in that capacity. Now called back is the Land Bank Board of Trustees. Does any member of the commission or county administrator wish to set aside any item on the land bank consent agenda? An item is not set aside, all items on the consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
McKernan District two, move to approve all as submitted.
Johnson District four, second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Now we have the land bank non-consent agenda and recognize Judd Knapp.
Good evening. I'm Judd Knapp, the interim land bank manager. Uh, tonight I present to you the application for two new homes. At standing committee, it was recommended that the developer have a meeting with the neighborhood group. This meeting did take place, and both the neighborhood group and the developer agreed on the new location at nine oh seven through nine fifteen Walker for the new homes. This concludes my presentation, and the developer is available for questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the commission have any questions or comments? Sounds good to me. I entertain a motion.
Walters move for approval. Johnson, second.
Motion, the second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend.
Aye.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, I apologize. I did not see your hand raised.
Too late, Mayor. No, I was just thanking the developer and the Neighborhood Association for giving us an example of working with staff to find an equitable solution for all parties. So with that, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, you can use that hand to slap me next time we meet, so. That concludes our meeting for the evening, thank you all for your attendance, we are adjourned.